Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get started this evening, we have a special presentation. And I think that it might have taken a, the earth had to move, or the sun had to go away, or something, to get the chief in here tonight.[20.23][20.23](Laughter). But we would like to give, make a proclamation, issue a proclamation to the chief. So, chief, if you'll come up and join me, I'd appreciate it. You know, the, to do it right, there was no way for Diane to put everything on a piece of paper. I mean, it just can't be done. So, we're going to do this anyway, so you'll have something to hang on your wall, sir. So, I would like to start. And I'm gonna read the first paragraph, then we're gonna go around, all the council's gonna participate in this. "So whereas, for forty-four years, Police Chief Dennis Evers has been known to go above and beyond the call of duty, and has dedicated himself to the highest standards of professionalism and excellence, as a proud member of the Beaver Creek Police Department." And?
Whereas, the young Dennis Evers began his career in Sugar Creek Township in 1977, where he served as a patrol officer, sergeant, and lieutenant, as well as the supervisor of the Green County Cooperative Crime Unit. And?
Whereas, Chief Evers joined the Beaver Creek Police Department in 1982, serving as a patrol officer, detective, sergeant, and ultimately being appointed as chief of police in June 2011, and has actively and devotedly served as chief for over nine years. And?
Whereas, Chief Evers' demand for excellence started early in his career by becoming the department's first polygraphist. Commander of the Citizens Police Academy helped develop the first countrywide protocol for handling sexual assaults, along with being a member of multiple boards, including Green County Sexual Assault Advisory Board, Criminal Justice Academy Advisory Board for Sinclair Community College, Green County Career Center, and Clark State University, Green County Law Enforcement Association, and Fairborn Municipal Court Advisory Committees for Court Security, and the Vivitrol Drug Corp. And?
Whereas, Chief Evers' service has received numerous awards, including Green County Prosecutor's Office Victim Witness Division Outstanding Community Service Award, State of Ohio Exemplary Service Award, 1993 Police Officer of the Year, Beaver Creek Police Department Inaugural Leadership Integrity Award, the David P. Eckert Memorial Award, and Beaver Creek 2019 Employee of the Year, along with the department's COLIA accreditation since 1999, and third consecutive Gold Standard Award with Excellence. And?
Whereas, Chief Evers has also always had a deep commitment to a positive partnership with the community, focusing the department on proactive programs and resources and the involvement within the community through the Community Engagement Unit, Safety Town, and multiple community events.
Now, therefore, chief, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and along with the entire city council, honor and commend Chief Dennis Evers for his four decades of exceptional service and commitment to keep Beaver Creek a safe and wonderful community in which we all live and work. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know this is not something you really want.[233.31][233.31](Applause).
(Inaudible).
We can do that.
We're gonna go after him so he doesn't have the last word.
We do have another special presentation for you, chief.
Thank you, man.
This is Representative Perouse.
Yes, so, chief, what a pleasure. Doris, what a pleasure. You guys have been hand and head for a long time. So, when I heard about this, and I know how Chief Evers loves all this attention, he loves all this glory, right?
You know about him.
(Laughter) I will tell you this, that if I was at the academy now, and I wanted to, to develop somebody to be a police chief with the right words, the right stature, the right bearing, it would be this guy. He's done so much for the city and for the community, and I couldn't not be here, even though I know you didn't want me to be here, to tell you thank you for that.[295.33][295.33](Laughter). The fact is, is you've done a marvelous job, and you've taken the city through some tough times, and not only, and you guys, thank you for all you do, not only do you appreciate it, but we all appreciate it, and the community. So, I've got this resolution, you can put it probably in a basement with that, right? But more importantly, this is my challenge coin. And I wanna make sure, you know how to get this right.
I do.
And give this to you, sir. And thank you for everything you've done.
I do.
And thank you. You're amazing, and we're gonna miss you, and we can't thank you enough, the whole community. Thank you, sir.[333.81][333.81](Applause).
Mr. Landau.
All right, so, I've been here with chief for four years now, and when I started at Beaver Creek, it made it a lot easier knowing the experience chief had, not only just with the community, knowing the community very well, but with his, I think we can all, we all know this, his reputation of integrity, of his ethical, his everything. Everybody knows in Green County, Chief Dennis Evers. It speaks volumes. And it spoke volumes to me. It's not something that, I appreciate, chief, not only helping me out in the early time, but also for sticking around, because he didn't have to. You got as many years as he has, he wanted to follow through on a few things, which I know I appreciated very, very much. And, you know, we aren't losing an employee to retirement, we're still gaining a continued friend. I've already made commitments that we're gonna do lunch, and things like that, but, chief, I appreciate all your work, all your efforts, not just my four years, but for all the years that you've put in, and, you know, I count it a blessing to myself, just knowing you. Okay? Thank you, chief.[427.02][427.02](Applause).
All right. If there's no objections, this is coming off.[434.31][434.31](Laughter). I do have to say, before we get started, just have a few comments, but, no offense, but I'm not gonna miss these Monday night council meetings.[446.81][446.81](Laughter). Monday night work sessions, and Pete, those two-hour staff meetings on Tuesdays.[453.62][453.62](Laughter). If you'll indulge me a few moments, I need to thank some people. First of all, I need to, excuse me, thank my family, especially my wife, Doris. Her unwavering support, you know, we married and started our family two months after I started here in 1982, over thirty-eight years ago. So, the city's been part of our family. She's rode this journey with me, and has been, been my biggest advocate. So, thank you, and I love you. Now, she wasn't pleased with me when she thought I was retiring in 2015, because she worried about the dream, obviously, that comes with the job. I reconsidered my decision to retire in 2015, because there was still work to be done that I wanted to see finished. The irony is, she's not retired yet, because she was not sure I was going to retire, and she's reminded me several times that she'll believe it when she sees it. Well, honey, it's official, I am retiring. So, now, I get to bug her about when she is going to retire, and I'm sure my list of things that need to be done are awaiting me. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the recognition with the proclamation, and thank you for your support in always providing the police department with the necessary funds to do the job the right way. And mayor, I remember when I started employment with the city of Beaver Creek, you were a member of the Fraternal Order of Police Associates.
Absolutely.
And you have always been supportive of the Beaver Creek Police Department, and I wanna publicly thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
I especially wanna thank you, Pete, for your unwavering support to me, and the, excuse me, the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department. You know, I thank you for your trust and confidence you showed in allowing me the latitude to run the police department the way it needed to be run, and for working with me on a transition plan to facilitate a smooth transition on a timetable that worked for both the city and myself. So, thank you for that. I'm truly honored and humbled and blessed to have served the great community for thirty-eight and a half years. I could not begin to thank everyone individually for all the cards, letters, phone calls, emails, food, that has been brought to the police department over the years, for the community showing their support. I thank everyone collectively who have shown their support to me and our police department over the years. We truly do appreciate that support. I ask everyone to continue their support for the dedicated men and women who serve and protect this community. Our mission is to work in partnership with our community, and the community's support is necessary to keep us a safe community. You know, I've truly been blessed to have been surrounded during the course of my career by outstanding, dedicated professionals, and it's been my privilege to have worked with them and for them over that time period. I could not begin to name all of those individuals, but I wish to thank them all tonight. Kudos to my command staff. Deputy Chief Farida, Captain Scott Molnar, Captain Chad Lindsay, Captain Sean Sumner. Special thanks to my administrative assistant, Karen Mahaffey. She truly is the hub of the wheel, and she keeps the administration section rolling, and I can't thank all of them for their contributions and assistance over the years. To the men and women of the Beaver Creek Police Department, it's been my honor to serve, excuse me, as the chief. Thank you for your commitment to excellence and the contributions that drive the quality of service provided to our community. This is a challenging time to be a police officer, but continue to wear the uniform with pride, because you are part of a good and noble profession. When called upon by the community, be prepared to serve, protect, and defend those who need you. It is an honor and privilege to be the guardians of this great community. Always embrace the public trust and the inherent dangers that come with the job responsibility. I will continue to pray for your safety and the safety of all first responders. All of you have heard me many times over the years encouraging you to step outside your comfort zones, to have the opportunity to achieve extraordinary things in your career. I continue to urge you to embrace those opportunities. Doing so will enhance your personal and professional experience, and allow the organization to achieve even greater excellence. In 2011, when I took over as the chief, we underwent the most significant transition of personnel in our history due to numerous retirements. When we learned through, what we learned through that experience is the organization is not about one individual. As individuals leave, including the chief, opportunities present themselves for the next person to step up to the challenge and step outside their comfort zone. Those leaders of tomorrow become the leaders of today, and I could not be happier for Deputy Chief Farida, that he's having this opportunity to step up to be a leader of today. He's been with me since 2011, and he has the right attitude, temperament, experience, and decision-making ability to lead the, lead this organization forward. One of his challenges will be to identify and grow the next group of leaders of tomorrow. He has heard from me many times over the years about the caution, be careful what you wish for, you might just get it. I say to him, be, stay true to yourself and your values, always be guided by what's best for the organization. I'll leave Jeff with the following quote from Douglas MacArthur, that was given to me and has been on my desk as a constant reminder since 2011. "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make the tough decisions, and the compassion to make tough decisions, the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He doesn't set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." In the end, leaders are much like eagles. They don't flock, you find them one of, one at a time. I wish Jeff the best, and I know he will do an outstanding job going forward. In closing, I can say I never had a day when I did not want to come to work. Yes, there were days, you think about the tasks that lie, lie ahead, and they would cause you to second-guess yourself, but I truly appreciated the blessings of getting to do a job I truly loved. When I graduated from college in the late seventies, seems like a long time ago, I was exploring the possibility of going to law school.[952.19][952.19](Laughter). Someone convinced me, try a law enforcement profession. I've never regretted that decision. How could I? I was given the opportunity to provide assistance and be a beacon of hope to victims who had experienced a very traumatic life event. I've met many, many courageous victims over the years, and they always inspired me to do the best job I could do on their behalf in whatever capacity I held in this organization. That's what this job is all about. It simply comes down to serving and protecting the public. Police work is a calling, and once it gets in your blood, as it did mine, there is no other career choice I could have made that would have been as rewarding as this one has been to me. So, thank you, and Godspeed, everyone.[1020.01][1020.01](Applause).
Chief, if I can ask you to come back up for a moment, I think Pete wants to ask your comments.
Well, we're, council, we can have that, but if we can get a picture real quick, like we did last time, council stand up.
Counselor's go down.
Oh, yeah, come on, whichever way. Have Doris come up, too?
Yep.
Lovely wife. I'd like the captains, please, the captains. Deputy Chief?
I think it's only doing like two or three pictures.
Let you guys in the middle here, we can briefly move this real quick. You guys be front and center here. Yep? Mayor?
No, you go.
All right, come on, guys, get in the back behind, or wherever we can. We've got several photographers taking a picture.
We're up, taking a picture.
All right, everybody look at, like, Donaro and Randy there.
They're team.
We're all smiling.
They're smiling good.
Got several? All right? Congratulations.
(Inaudible). Vice Mayor, would you like to start?
I'd be happy to. I've had the opportunity to work with chief for a lot of years, and I've really appreciated the wisdom that he's always brought to every conversation that we've ever had. You know, I worked on the levies for the police department even before chief, when John Turner was there, and I continued on with Chief Evers, and it was a real joy and a pleasure to work with him, and I respect him probably as much or more than anyone I've ever worked with. I thank you very much for your service. We're gonna miss having you around, but I'm really pleased that you're gonna be able to spend some time with your grandkids and work on that honey-do list. So, thank you very much, chief.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Unfortunately, I haven't had the pleasure to work with chief for very long, but I can say in the short time that I have, and through a lot of the stories and things that I have heard, he has been nothing but a leader in this community, and I can, you, I hate to say it, but you have big shoes to fill, as I'm sure you are very well aware. But, chief, we just wanna thank you very much for your service, thank you for your dedication to this community, and you will very much be missed.
Councilmember Garcia.
Chief, we'll definitely miss seeing you at these meetings. I know Monday nights aren't your favorite, but we loved having you here. You were definitely one of the first people I met with when I was running for council, and I'll always remember being able to talk to you in your office about things that you need, so I really appreciate the time you spent with me. And then also, too, I'd like to thank Doris. I know that, chief, it's all about you, but right now, it's gonna be all about Doris, because I know this is really hard. We really appreciate you giving us those extra five years, because they were very meaningful for us and the city, but I know at least two of us up here can attest to how hard of a position you're in with this life. So, thank you very much, and I know your family's gonna be very grateful for this. So, thank you for sharing him.
Councilmember Bales.
Chief, I've known you for a long time, and, you know, your dedication and your integrity has really led the department, and you can tell, and it's trickled down to all of the sworn officers and your staff, and we do have a fantastic department, and I really do give you a lot of credit, I appreciate it. You've shared with me a lot of wisdom over the years, and I think you've even told me to be careful what I wish for from time to time.[1291.83][1291.83](Laughter). Yeah, but enjoy your retirement, don't be a stranger, and I look forward to continuing our relationship.
Councilmember Dor.
Thank you, mayor. Chief, there are two words that come to mind when I think of you. The first is service. In this day and era, it's rare that, that people stay in the same career, in the same place, for more than a few years, and reading through the proclamation. It's at an absolutely outstanding record of service to this community and to the wider region. The second word that comes to mind is probably a strange one, but it is dividend, and there are generations of young people in Beaver Creek that are gonna have a dividend in this community because of your work and the things that you have put forth. Running for council and talking with the wider public, you make our jobs very easy, because we're able to say things like, you know, we joined COLIA, or we did this, or we never did that, and it's really a testament to your forethought, the ways that you've really seen policing moving, and there is a true dividend for generations to come because of your service. So, thank you.
Chief, you already mentioned, we go back, and, a long, long... But it's been a pleasure the entire time that we've gotten to know each other. Well, I wanna repeat what the vice mayor's mentioned, and that is wisdom. Any, any, every time, it seems like we have a discussion, and whether he has it with one-offs on one-on-one, or whether you're addressing all of council. We appreciate the wisdom and the experience that you have brought to this community, so I'm not gonna linger, I'm just gonna say one more time, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you in the future, too. Maybe not at council meetings, but other places.[1416.83][1416.83](Laughter). And there's one other person tonight that probably has a few words they might like to say, and so I'd like to ask Mr. McHugh, if he has any comments he'd like to add.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, just briefly, chief, we certainly go back many years, you probably, probably were a sergeant, I suspect, at the time, but certainly I've had a great pleasure of representing you. We've had some really tough issues to deal with at times, but you've always been extremely professional, and I cannot help but wish you the absolute best in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call. Chief, thanks a lot. We're gonna move on with our regular scheduled meeting, and we just, we can't say it often enough, thank you. All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Dur.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. And before we go for any further, I actually would like to, stop me if you don't like, want this, but I, the, my predecessor is here, Mr. Brian Jarvis. Brian, you have a comment or two that you'd like to get, make for the, to the chief?
There's been so many good words said this evening, I don't want to, you know, impede that, but my recollection of the chief has been, has calmed a meter. It seemed to be, over the years, nothing seemed to rattle him. It was amazing. I could, if something was happening, you could always find calmness and serenity around him, it was just great to be around. So, chief, thanks for all that you do, truly appreciate it. You will enjoy retirement. The honey-do list does get long, that's for sure, but that's just part of it. But thank you again for all your service in years, thank you so much.
Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion to excuse?
A motion to excuse?
No.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Kern?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Kern. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I will turn the meeting over to Councilmember Garcia, she's gonna fill in for Councilmember Kern.
Yes, if you could all join me and stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing for one moment in honor of our valiant chief and all of our law enforcement in Beaver Creek, if we could say a quick prayer for our law enforcement. Heavenly Father, watch over all policemen and women and law enforcement officers everywhere. Protect them from harm and the performance of their duty to stop crime, robbery, riots, and violence. We pray you help them keep our streets and homes safe day and night. We commend them to your loving care, because their duty is dangerous. Grant them strength and courage in their daily assignments. Dear God, protect these brave men and women. Grant them your almighty protection, unite them safely with their families after duty has ended. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you have a agenda before us this evening, is there, are there any changes?
Seeing none, we'll approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. We have a set of minutes from October 26, 2020, to approve. Any corrections, changes?
Mayor, move to approve the minutes for October 26.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 26, the regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 20-31.
This is a second reading of an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing chapter, current chapter 96, Streets and Sidewalks of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new chapter 96, Streets and Sidewalks to the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. This ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Bales, but before we ask for a motion, any, any discussion? Anyone? Sir?
Motion to approve ordinance 20-31. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-31. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is ordinance 20-32.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, and to amend ordinances 19-30, 20-06, 20-07, 20-14, 20-23, and 20-30.
Mr. Casser.
Good evening, mayor, and members of city council. This is a, another appropriation in certifying some revenue. As you recall, or maybe you don't recall, but in January 27, city council approved resolution 20-04, authorizing the city manager to execute a agreement between the city and the developer of Rock Drive Medical Campus for the construction of a new traffic signal at Rock Drive and North Fairfield. Pursuant to that agreement, the developer recently provided the city with a check for $240,000, which equals the estimated cost of the installation of the traffic signal. This agreement came after the budget was already developed, so again, we didn't have that in the original 2020 budget, and so it's necessary to certify the revenue related to that check, and also add it to a new project to get that accomplished, so. That's the first item. The second item is, again, a, another partial... is, again, another partial reimbursement from FEMA and the Ohio EMA to reimburse us for some expenditures related back to the tornado event, May 27 tornado event. So, the direct costs were incurred by a particular fund. In this case, the majority of them was the street fund. There was a little bit of a, the police time for safety that got reimbursed in this particular check, and what we need to do is certify that revenue into those funds to reimburse them for the expenditures that they had related to the services they provided for the tornado event itself. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you. This is the first reading of a single reading ordinance. So, at this point, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Questions from council? All right, this is, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 20-32.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-32. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Next, Resolution 20-41.
This is a resolution by Beaver Creek City Council recognizing Deputy Chief Jeff Fierita's service to the City of Beaver Creek and approving the city manager's appointment of Deputy Chief Jeff Fierita for the position of Chief of Police.
Thank you. Chief, may I?
Mayor and council, tonight, as we've heard, the transition has occurred over this year, appointing then-Captain Fierita to Deputy Chief. We first started talking about this back in, well, Chief and I before that, but you, you guys started hearing about it during the budget time this time last year, and the plans that were, were laid out. I wanted to provide you guys some information, some things you probably aren't aware of, of Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Jeff Fierita started his career with the Beaver Creek Police Department in January 1992 as a patrol officer. Count that up. That's nearly 29 years ago. During his career, he has worked in various assignments to include hostage negotiator, field training officer, officer in charge, detective, polygraph examiner, patrol sergeant, division captain, and deputy chief of police. Deputy Chief Fierita has a bachelor's degree in sci, of science degree, let me start over here, bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice administration from Park University. He has completed numerous leadership courses during his career, Police Executive Leadership College, Public Safety Leadership Academy, Certified Law Enforcement Executive, and the FBI National Academy. A few of those last ones, especially the FBI, and I believe the executive, those have been just since I've been here, correct?
Yes.
So, that kind of tells you who Chief Evers was mentoring to knew and realize the potential of Deputy Chief Fierita. During his career, Deputy Chief Fierita has served on professional boards representing the Beaver Creek Police Department, to include being a past president and chair of the Board of the Ohio Association of Polygraph Examiners, and a past president of the Green County Law Enforcement Association. Deputy Chief Fierita has been married for 31 years to his wife Carol, who is here. Thank you for coming. We'll bring her up as well here in a minute. She's like, "Oh, thanks." The Fieritas have, have two adult children, Molly, who lives in Huber Heights, and Andy in West Portsmouth, Ohio, who are both married. Jeff and Carol also have four beautiful grandchildren, ages two to seven. They're the best in the world, aren't they, grandchildren, who they love spending much time with. During their time away from, during their time away from work, Jeff and Carol minister to the youth at the Springfield First Church of Nazarene, I say if you knew this, where Jeff serves as the youth pastor. Say, I bet you didn't know that.
Did not.
Deputy Chief Jeff Fierita is dedicated to his faith, his family, and to serving the citizens of Beaver Creek. The city council is aware of his promotion and transition, as I said in the beginning, began last year during the police budget work session, has followed through somewhat according to plan. Some delay in COVID, I think we were thinking of February and March, moving him to deputy chief, and that ended up being in July, but all things worked good. Tonight is Chief Evers, as you know, last council meeting, and he says, "Praise the Lord," and "Thank God," and all those things. And so, with this, I felt it was important to have them both here and to do this a little bit ahead of schedule. He'll be leaving later this month, and as Deputy Chief Fierita will be the acting chief until the effective date of the resolution. The effective date of this resolution is January 10. So, Chief's official last day is January 9, but later this month, he will be on leave. He's like me, he's at use it or lose it of the amount of leave time he has built up, and so he will be taking a much well-deserved leave. That leaving Deputy Chief as acting chief with no issues there from me. I'll officially make that as needed, and Chief is leaving a police order behind as well to that effect. So, as city manager, I am asking city council to approve my appointment of Jeff Fierita to the position of Chief of Police for the City of Beaver Creek effective January 10, 2021.
Thank you. Discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, it's my honor to move to approve Resolution 20-41.
Second.
I have a motion in several seconds. I don't know what that means. To approve Resolution 20-41. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Motion carries. Congratulations, sir.
And if I may, if I can give the, I guess, Chief Fierita-to-be a moment to speak, if I could.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Landrum, and thank you so much to, to my friend Dennis. Thirteen years ago, my father passed away. Eleven years ago, my father-in-law passed away. He's been a true mentor in my life. Shortly after my initial interview, sitting about right there, back in 1991, he was the first person I spent a great deal of time with in the polygraph examination room, which is tense. He earned my respect immediately. We have, I do have big shoes to fill. However, I think he is more than prepared myself and has surrounded us with a wonderful command staff and a wonderful police department. With your support, it is, it's a pleasure and it's an honor to serve. Two words come to mind when I speak of Chief. Integrity, which is common sense. It's self-fulfilling. It's obvious. And humility. Humility is that true leader, there's never been an emphasis on Dennis and what he's doing, other than tonight. It was a challenge to make sure he's here. However, that true emphasis always has been on others and building us up, promoting the police department, promoting the city. And I thank him for that, because he has done an outstanding job of standing back and pushing us to excel and to do better. And I just, I just pray that that's something I can do as I move into this position here in the next few weeks. So, Chief, I do thank you. And thank you.
Mayor, up there. Chief? We're, you know, it's more of a military kind of thing to where you're passing of the baton, so to speak, you know, change of guard, so to speak. And since this was Chief's last meeting that he, he was going to attend, I just thought that we'd get a picture of them, you know, and they, they'll lather up in the, the whatever to wash their hands off, but I was going to get a picture of them shaking hands to symbolize the passing. Now, we'll say this, council, January 10, that Monday morning, we will, Mayor will be swearing in Jeff at that point in time, and of course, you guys are welcome, and we will, that night is a, I believe, a council meeting, which we will acknowledge that as well. So, we're not done with Jeff, but we thought this would be a good appropriate time to do this, if you don't mind. Please.
All right. Go ahead, right up here. All right, how about getting the wives up there with him, Chief? We're not going to let him get off that easy. Now, we certainly look forward to carrying on the wonderful relationship we've had with the police department for so many years, and I certainly expect we will. Any other comments before we move on? All right. I think we might actually utilize the outgoing chief here on this next one. You, you didn't know you were on the agenda, did you?
No.
Liquor permit. May we have, you need to read anything on that?
Last time, last one, liquor.
This has got to be your doing.
No, I don't have any.
Now, this is where you're buying afterwards, I think.
This is a tough one. We have a change of corporate stock ownership for LLC Doing Businesses Rapid Fire Pizza. So, the Ohio Department of Liquor Control notified us of a request to change the corporate stock ownership members on a D5 liquor permit for DSR Pizza LLC Doing Businesses Rapid Fire Pizza and Patio 3301 Dayton Zena Road, Suite 10, Beaver Creek, Ohio. The records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the applicant shareholders for this application request. Staff is recommending the application request move forward without comment.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Moving on, council time. How about we start on the right over here?
Decision item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I scratched that out too quick. Decision item, acceptance of third-quarter 2020 financial summary.
I'll end a positive note here.
Okay.
Trust me. I just wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to take a look at the financials. I'm going to give you the bad news up front, and then I'll end up with a very positive method at the back. But as far as the city's revenues go, again, from the pandemic, it's really starting to take hold, and you're starting to see that in the collections of some of the areas that are truly affected. Property tax, we got about $435,000 less than we had last year, and about $110 less than we had budgeted. That basically is due to the tornado, the values of those properties that were destroyed or damaged. We thought it was going to be about a half million dollars effect, and it turned out to be fairly close to that. Delinquencies are up a little bit, but again, that's the cause and relationship of the tornado from 2019. Related to the pandemic, interest revenue, the interest went from 2.55% down to 0.2. So, again, we've lost about $150,000 there. Hotel motel, obviously, during the state home order and the shutdown. The good news on that end is it's starting to slowly peak back up a little bit, but again, lost $140,000 with that year-to-date. Fuel taxes, obviously, based on consumption, that's taken a real hit here, and we've lost $200,000 related to that. And then you get down to the individual programming, park and rec programs, the senior center. Again, you could see I was starting to compound here. Food and beverage at the golf course completely shut down at this point. Again, we ended up shutting it down and, again, eliminating a lot of the very popular items, the brunches, the weddings, those type of things that bring in money. And again, that's down about $250,000. And here's the plus side. The plus side is that with some of the golf courses closing, and people wanting to get out really bad and go golfing, we actually have had a, almost a record year with rounds over 27,000 year-to-date, and that's about 3,200 rounds more than we normally had through September. So, that's the plus side. The other thing is that you saw tonight, we are starting to get some of the final reimbursements from the tornado from FEMA and the Ohio EMA. So, again, those will still come trickling in. We still have basically one more big distribution that we're waiting on. That's kind of tied to the barn right now, the replacement of the barn. So, that'll be coming up shortly. And I'd like to say that, you know, we're going to take a big hit because of Dennis's retirement, but since he's retired twice now, his second one gets a little smaller. So, just to let you know that, that's, that's kind of the report. Not a whole lot of good news, but it goes to show you the impact of the pandemic that's had on our finances. And again, we've done some reactive measures when we started cutting back staffing and some of the other expenditures. But again, it's not going to replace that lost revenue. But, so that's the unfortunate report for the third quarter.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Sheriff.
Any questions? Anybody have any? Very good.
Anyone? Do I hear a motion, then?
Mayor, I move to accept the third-quarter 2020 financial summary.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the third-quarter financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, we're on track for council time. How about Councilmember Bales? You start us off.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of spending some time with Cub Scout PAC-85. They called, and they were interested in talking to a council member to learn more about local government and the role that we play in the community and so forth. And so, we talked a lot about some community issues, and they brought up a litter issue that they see sometimes out on the streets. They, they wanted us to consider tackling a pollution issue. And I also found it very interesting that they, perhaps it's the time of the year, they talked about leaf pickup, which was an interesting topic of conversation with the Cub Scouts. But anyway, I had a great time yesterday, and I think we've got a lot of civic-minded leaders in, for our future generations. The other thing I want to talk about was just to thank everyone who exercised their right to vote last week. Although our income tax initiative wasn't successful, I appreciate hearing everybody's voices at the ballot box. And then finally, I just want to encourage everybody to wear their mask in public. COVID numbers are really up in the county and across the state, so be diligent, wear your mask, and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd echo Councilmember Bales's statements. Thank you to everyone who exercised their vote. It is very informative for us, so thank you all. In tandem, second point, in tandem with Mr. Casera's report, I'd like to encourage everyone to shop small, small businesses, many in Beaver Creek. It's a difficult time, so if we can rally together and stay local, I think that's a wonderful idea. Finally, I'd like to thank all of the road crews. I've been doing a fair bit of running recently, especially on the sidewalk around the mall and a number of major through fairs, and really, there's some tremendous work being done. The roads, pavements are looking like they're in excellent condition, The roads, pavements are looking like they're in excellent condition, and so I'd like to thank everyone for their diligent work there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I would just give one final congratulations to Chief Evers and your retirement. That's really wonderful. I kind of chuckled behind my mask when you said you wanted to go to law school, and then someone very intelligently talked you out of it. I was the exact opposite, and no one talked me out of it. I wanted to be a cop growing up. I wanted to be Detective John McLean, and I went law school route instead, so looking at you, sometimes I think I may have made the wrong choice, but we really appreciate all of your help, and thank you for being such a good leader in the community. And then congratulations again to Acting Chief Fierita. I know you're going to do great work, and we really look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. So thank you again, and thank you to everyone who voted. We really appreciate hearing everybody at the voting box, so thank you very much to all of our residents.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually thinking, Councilmember Bales, about the Girl Scouts that we had in recently this weekend, so it is funny that you mentioned the litter problem because I drove past an area that they had identified as a concern and noticed that it was very much cleaned up, and so I feel that that is very important for many of the youth of our community, so I was glad to see that. I also want to remind everyone that Veterans Day is Wednesday, and we live in a community highly filled with veterans. With Right Pat here, I think that you probably could go to one of your neighbor's homes, and they are probably a veteran, so please remember to take the time to say thank you for their service, but for the service of those veterans, they defend this great country and the freedom that we have, so I encourage everyone to at least say thank you. I know that we'll be having a small ceremony on Wednesday for anyone that would like to attend. I believe the information will be on the city's Facebook page, but I would just say that I think the best way is just to show your appreciation by saying thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for going out and voting as well. I know it was a large turnout. I worked the polls, and we were busy for about five hours, and then it kind of settled out, and I think a lot of that had to do with early voting. But I'd also like to congratulate Chief again. Doris, you're going to have your hands full with him at home all the time. There's no question at all, but I don't know what you're going to do, but you might start making the list right now. And Jeff, congratulations. I remember one of the first times I met you was when you gave me a polygraph back around 2006 or 2007, and I learned things about myself I didn't know. But it was all good.
But did he pass?
I'm still here, so I passed, so, but I look forward to your leadership, and I know you'll do a good job. One more thing, I sent out evaluation forms to everyone to get filled out. I have two of them back. If you could get them in as soon as possible, I would appreciate it, and so we can go to work on that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I think most of it's been said. I think the city manager is going to elaborate a little bit further on Veterans Day on Wednesday, so you get some more detail. I had the privilege last week of going out to the ribbon-cutting at NASIC, and that's a, it's been on their radar for quite some time, but now they're breaking ground, they have all the funds that they need to finish this project, and it's a workforce of 800-plus that will be coming in to work at NASIC, and that includes, that includes the Space Command's intelligence as well. So regardless of whether, even if we don't get Space Command, which I'm still hopeful we might, the, that part of Space Command is still already scheduled to be at NASIC, and so looking forward to that. With that, I too just want to say congratulations to our two superstars out here, one taking a step backwards and the other one taking a step forward, so we're looking forward to it, and we'll all cross paths soon, I'm sure. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few announcements tonight, was alluded to earlier, Veterans Day ceremony is Wednesday, November 11th at 2:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Park there off of North Fairfield Road. Guest speaker will be Colonel Michael Phillips, Vice Commander of the 88th Air Base Wing. Music will be provided by Right Pat's Spirit of Freedom. There will, usually, there used to be bleacher seating. There will not be any bleacher seating due to COVID guidelines and mandates. We are strongly, strongly, strongly recommending the wearing of face masks and social distancing. Of course, this is outside, there is space, so you, I think it can be done very safely, so we're just asking people to, as Ben mentioned, to follow the guidelines, and we'll all be safe and be a nice way of honoring the veterans. Road construction updates. Kemp Road, if you've been down Kemp Road, you see a lot going on there, and you see another side of pavement being paved to where the cars are soon going to be. So the contractor is planning on paving between Two-Lane Drive and Meadow Court Drive this week. Over the next couple of weeks, the contractor will be completing the new sidewalks and driveways along the south side of roadway with the goal of switching traffic to the south side of Kemp Road around the week of Thanksgiving. Traffic then will utilize the new pavement along the south side of Kemp Road over the winter months. So that, and just for those, that will not be the final grading or paving of that, it'll be another layer that eventually next, next year, we'll go over what you're driving on as well, so don't think, wow, this is not good while it's not the final paving. So a lot of people think, because we switch back over to the lane, that was the final, and it's not. There's another thin layer that goes on to make it really smooth and to get those manhole covers all smooth and all those things going on. So just to let you know, Kemp Road, and we've got another one, Dayton Xenia. You can't go east or west in Beaver Creek without hitting this, and I can't get here without hitting one of them either. Contractor continues to prepare for the placement of the temporary pavement, and the temporary pavement is planned to be completed next week with traffic being switched to the temporary pavement around the end of the month. So basically, we've got Kemp Road and Dayton Xenia around the end of the month or so switching to sides of the pavement. Traffic switch will allow for the installation of storm sewer along the south side of Dayton Xenia Road over the winter months. And again, both of these projects are multi-year projects. Basically, why do we start so late in the years? Because they're grant-funded. There's a lot of grant funding for both of these projects, which a state grant year starts July 1st, that's why until we finally get the official letter that says you can now bid these out, that is why these go over multiple seasons, so to speak. We were able to, say, get it in January and get it bid out by March and get it awarded, and they can break ground. We may be able to squeeze one of these projects in in an actual season, but with the state fiscal year being what it is, it's just, it's not doable, so apologize for that. We will try to get it up, though, both as smooth as we can get on the temporary surfaces for both during the winter times. If you guys remember Dayton Xenia, the other road widening project that we did, you were, the barrels were there during the winter, which actually kind of helped you see where the road was, but that's to be the same condition. We'll try to get it as smooth as we can, not only for the cars, but our plows have to plow those streets as well, so including the manhole covers and stuff. So if you have any questions on either of these projects or any projects, you can always contact the Beaver Creek Engineering Division for questions at 937-427-5513. And I could make a million jokes off of this, it's the place everybody's dying to be, but yeah, Barrow, see, that was a bad one. Barrow offerings at Mount Zion Park Cemetery, this is really a nice feature. Garden of Peace is complete with a new columbarium and in-ground niches, niches, however you want to say it, or cremation with a bench. And this is, we're going to have a single or double that will be available, and you see the price is starting there, but this is something that, you know, not everybody desires to be buried in the traditional sense, and with cremation is a, definitely a place. This is a new part of our master cemetery plan that we developed. This was one of the first phases of the columbarium and doing the concrete work and having this, and also updating the building is coming up in the next budgetary cycle as well, because the building looks like a cooter's garage, if you would say. It is pretty, we're embarrassed when people come to try to do something and they're literally almost in a shack of a building, so we'll be doing some improvements there, but come check this out if you have a loved one, if you want to do planning in the future, a lot of people do that, you can prepay, and we have tons of those that happen. So come have a look, and if this is something you're desiring, give us a call at the cemetery for more information, 937-427-5549. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Pete. All right, at this point, is there anyone tonight present that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.